Good evening. I'd like to call the work session to order. Angela, can we get a roll, please?
Roll call Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez. Brenneman.
Here.
Haley. Mylan.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the record reflects that Mr. Haley is in the building and Ms. Gonzalez will be here this evening yet still. So with that, I can I get a are there any are there any items on the agenda that need to be revised?
Move to approve agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call Bryant.
Hi.
Brenneman.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
And Board Member Haley, there's a motion to approve the agenda and it's your turn to vote.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson.
That motion carries.
Thank you. With that, one item that President Gonzalez wanted me to pass along to the board is she would like to remind the board to submit their board evaluations. And we, I think, two meetings ago or two work sessions ago, we passed around, she provided us with a evaluation to use. So if we get those, Angela, I believe we're turning those into you. Is that right?
That's correct. I've received one.
Okay. And I think President Gonzalez wanted that done prior to the end of the calendar year. So if folks could maybe remember to bring that at the first meeting in December, that would be great. Are there any other items that the board has an update on?
I had the Public Works and Safety. I attended the Public Works and Safety Committee meeting on Monday. One of the topics that was presented by the Police Department, Fire Department, Health Department, was that they are going to begin with active shooter training and also with stemming the fluid blood, you know, if you've been shot, how to stop, how to stop the bleed. I think that was what it was called. And I don't know whether we do, we have any training like that, Bill and Lace.
We've had, we've had some. If you guys remember, there was a guy that kind of caused the problem over at the hotel a few years ago. And then I think we did some type of
We had a police officer.
Yes.
Right, police officer. But then we followed back up with some type of training.
It's active shooter training.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was
Okay.
Well, they came into a board meeting or a work session and did a training for the board.
The question was asked by Melissa, you know, would, would they be, would they be able to extend the BPU that training? And they said that they would, but they want to first make sure it's developed and roll it out with the UG. And then they will offer it to the BPU that were interested.
Yeah, would be interested. So we've got a number of buildings that house employees. So yes, safety reasons alone, you know, among other things, yes, will be interesting.
Last time the Unified Government did the active shooting training was about the same time the BPU did. I attended both and they were very similar.
Right, okay. I didn't want to call it active shooter. I was trying to rack my brain over at least that we did a training around that incident or what's it?
Okay.
Before that, okay. So that's all. Do you have a contact person or do you?
I will. I will get back with Melissa and find out.
Okay.
But I don't think that it was just there, just it was an informative thing for the committee that this is what, you know, they had kind of a brief outline of it.
Right.
But it wasn't anything that they were prepared yet to do. But when it gets closer, I'll get that information and let them know that the BPU would be interested possibly partake in.
Thank you, Mr. Brenneman. Are there any other board updates? Mr. Haley?
Yeah, Madam President, thank you. I attended Economic Development and Finance Committee. We met on the 7th of November. No real items of interest to us. There was approval of the West Lawn Development Agreement paving lot out by the Legends extent of the paving for that lot. There was an issuance on extension of these for the yards too, of some IRBs, not to exceed 51, about eight million for the IRBs out of the yards to apartments. These apartments, which may be something that we would want to look at here at the utility as to how we come in play. Are estimated to bring a great amount of revenue down by the
Stockyards.
Stockyards and the Rock Island Bridge area. There would be apartments and they may want to visit with us more about that. Other than that, just some that service obligations that the UG was having to meet. Most interesting was the Merck update on the Merck. Certainly for the committee, I appreciated the changes that it made right here across the street from our offices. And some of the, they're now looking like they can be freestanding. There have been an issuance, as you know, to assist the Merck and it's, and it's being built. And I do have that available, what their PowerPoint looks like for any member of the, of our board or that would like to see these and other handouts that we're at meeting. That's all I have. Thank you. Any questions?
No, Jeff, I would like to see that after you've had an opportunity as well. So on November 9th, I met again with Commissioner Bynum and a couple of folks from the UG as well as why can't I think of her name? Dr. At any rate, on the pilot task force that's been put together and we discussed specifics. Reggie Lindsay discussed specifics about, to the extent that there are specifics about exactly how the pilot fits into the Unified Government budget. And so, so the pilot, you know, as we all know, that in the last year made up $34.5 million of the annual revenue for the Unified Government. And we talked about how that was broken down specifically, they allocate 70% of it to police and fire. But, but we sort of drilled into that allocation and Reggie's going to put together some more information for us as well. One thing they did, they were very thankful for the disaggregated customer breakdown that we gave them and the amounts that those individual groups pay in the pilot. And they talked further about potentially giving some and ways to potentially propose something to give residential customers some type of relief with respect to that. Very, very early in the process, the goal is to be able to present something to the full Unified Government Commission in February and to the mayor in February. So we're still meeting. We've got another, a couple of meetings followed up even before the end of the year. And one thing they did ask for, which Bill, I'm hoping Lori can provide them, I'm sure she can, is sort of a BPU or revenue trend over like a 10-year period for, for both everything that, that the pilot would apply to. So if we could just do like a trend of what the revenue was and pilot applied to that, that's the information that they're looking for. So that's, that's all I have from that report as well, unless anybody has any questions. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there any indication or did you get a sense of what the general move is regarding the pilot in and of itself? Among other members that are there, you know, it's very existence and some of the nuts and bolts, it's longevity, anticipated longevity, which I've been warned is forever. But just how it, I'm gauging to and from its percentages or did you get a feel for how your fellow committee members were as a reflection of?
I, I did. So Mike Graham over at the Unified Government actually did a little bit of research. And he put together some data that he collected, I believe he got together with KMU and got some data from them, which is Kansas Municipal. Are you familiar with KMU?
I'm not.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, so that is, that is one of the organizations that BPU belongs to in Kansas, Kansas Municipal Utilities Organization. And he brought in some data from, oh gosh, I wish I had this in front of me and I apologize for not having it in front of me. Bill, you may know, I don't know if he got with you on it as well, but two other utilities in the state, neither one of which is obviously the size of BPU. And so I don't want to say it wasn't an apples-to-apples comparison, but it certainly wasn't because both of the mechanisms that those two other utilities use are not payment in lieu of taxes, taxes mechanisms. And even if they were, if you could make that argument, and this is my own opinion, it's not the opinion of that particular task force. In my opinion, you couldn't relate it because, because of the tax base that it's being drawn from. Because the two utilities that were being referred to were just so much smaller than the BPU is. So and because I'm going to tell you that their, their percentages wind up being miniscule compared to the 11.9 that is assessed for BPU. But I did not consider that to be an apples-to-apples comparison. And I will get that data and share that with the rest of the board so you can see what data might pull. So you can, and I apologize, I should have brought it tonight. I didn't, but I'll get it to you. And so even in the conversations that we were having about it, there seemed to be, I don't want to say a disconnect because I don't think that's fair. I think that there, there are, there's still a struggle as to how the pilot is defined. Even though we know exactly what those words mean. And Angela, you know, we went through this, I don't know, remember if it was earlier this year or last year. It all runs together, it seems like. But, you know, the Unified Government Legal Department actually put out a memorandum because we had some questions about how this was defined and what this, what this really means, right? And some folks on the call actually were likening to a franchise free and we have been, obviously, I think we've been steered, you know, away from that because that's not really what it represents. And so after that meeting, Commissioner Bynum did share the memorandum from the legal department with the staff and Dr. Hill, that's who it is, Dr. Hill, to explain to them how the Unified Government defines the payment lieu of tax, what it is and how, how it is, is applied. For lack of a better way of saying it, I guess. And I presume that that memo was this year, was it not Angela?
I believe so, yes.
And so you probably have that memorandum in an email somewhere because I believe that that was shared with the board. So I will, I'll remind you of that timeframe so you can check your email for it. So you can see how it was defined. But I mean, generally, I think it's still a struggle to sort of explain in common terms what that means to a resident of, or a business in Kansas City, Kansas.
Yes, there is. That, that struggle continues. Was the, or are there opportunities for anyone to participate? The meeting is open that you have, correct? Or are they held, how are those meetings?
I don't, I don't know that they're closed. I just know that this is sort of like just a task force that the mayor asked Commissioner Bynum to put together. I'm confident she wouldn't mind anyone listening in, but I'll certainly ask her. I don't know, Angela.
It would need to be an open meeting that would be accessible to the public.
And when is, is there a participated date?
You may want to share that with Commissioner Bynum. I'm not, I'm not the one doing this.
You know when that might meet again?
If there were more than, sorry, go ahead, Angela, hold on.
I just want to know if you've set another time for another meeting?
I believe we have, and I will look at the date and I will let you know before the night's out.
Thank you. No, I stand by my, I stand by my statement. Need to be an open meeting.
So the task force meetings that we're having need to be open meeting?
If they, if, if an elected official appointed the members.
I don't know if appointing is the right.
If, or selected the members.
You may need to talk to Commissioner Bynum. I mean, she may be well aware of this and I, I just didn't know that any of this information had gone out publicly as to our, like, we've met via Zoom last, I will say, so. You may want to make a note of that. Okay, that's all I had on that. So Bill, I guess we would.
Just follow up with your.
Yes.
So Mike Graham is actually sitting here, so.
Oh, there we go. Sorry, Mike. My bad.
That's all right. Second, I'm not surprised at what you said about KMU because this BPU is by far the largest utility, municipal utility in Kansas. And when you point, the things that I'm familiar with, and I certainly don't know everything about all the other KMU members, but most of them are departments within that city. You know, they would be not a, not a utility like BPU. So I'm sure that there is a lot of budget transfers between the utility and then other parts of their city government. So I'm not sure if you would actually find pilot as one of the things that they, that they use just based on budget transfer, accounting, transfers and stuff like that. But we can certainly help if you guys want that type of help.
He could tell you.
Okay, but what I, what I was suggesting was making a look at some of the APPA data that's out there for similar sized utilities throughout the Midwest, you know, closer to BPU size and see how, how pilot is being treated there. Because I'll tell you, there, there's a stark difference in Kansas between BPU and the rest of the KMU members. And we can help collect that if you, if you're interested in getting that information.
This is Jeff. I'll weigh in on a couple of points. Number one, the way it was described to me, the pilot from the UG was that if you think about all of the properties that are part of the BPU, the land, there would be a tax base amount that would be gathered by the utility, by the UG for all those properties. And basically what it is, is it's, that's why it's not a tax, it's a fee and that would be equivalent to what a tax would be if that land was taxed. Because if this was a privately owned investor-owned utility, what would their tax burden be? And that's how it was kind of designed. The thing is, is originally it was designed to be around 5.9%. And over time, it's escalated. And if you, and I'm sure that you can contact Dave Melhoff and he can give you more specifics, but they do. And it was APPA at one time sent out a thing that about what the average like pilot would be for a public utility. And most of them are in the 5% range. So we are far above the weight of that.
And it was reduced at some point though, from the 11.9.
From 12.9 to 11.9.
Okay.
And then it's never been reduced since that, even though we've requested it.
Thank you.
The audit has been following for the last 15 years, recommended 7.9. Stans and Paul, who's in fits, that hasn't changed at all. I don't know, big question about, you're the ones that got the money, the boy, the utilities. They say no, the, no, they use.
Board is interested in the history. We can provide the data to show, show you where the pilot started and then how it's expanded over time, so.
I'd be all for that. Thank you.
Yeah, nothing else. Just a question. Just shows what the percentage was annually. Some sample.
Yeah. So there is a choice I'll ask the board for. Do you want to move into capital improvement plan for the budget or you want Mike to do a update on the redistricting? I think we've got time to do both.
I would think that the redistricting shouldn't take very long at all.
Right.
What I, what I've done, what we have, part of you are are the first two. So we have four sheets and I duplex the table to kind of show the population and there's, I mean, how that, how that checks out on the back. So the first 12 alternatives are the same as we looked at last time. And then per Mr. Bryant, I have a 3.1, 3.2. And he asked us to build back more to start on the state line on the east side and west. And that's the first two showing. And then I have played around the printer there and just based on the population, there might be some precincts that would look like they fit a little better and maybe a food line, I'll say, or boundaries. But just the way the population is, that's, that's not going to work out.
I, you know, this is Jeff. I don't, I don't know what the process is from here, but I know that the one I like the most is 3.1. I don't know how the other board members stand it. It really doesn't impact too much of anybody else except Tom and myself. And he was, he's okay with 3.1. I, that's my, the preference I have. I mean, it just keeps a continuity, you know, instead of wrapping around. I do, I mean, I know that some of those little areas have nobody there, but that's the ones that do. It just starts pushing to more into appropriate placement. I don't know what the process is from here.
If the board has a clear preference this evening, I'll bring one resolution forward. If it seems like you're split, then I would bring however many seem to like they could end up being adopted. So.
Anybody have a problem with 3.1 version? That's this version over here. Do you have a problem with that one versus the other one? I mean, yours doesn't change. Your district says the same. You don't lose any ground.
Tom was losing ground. Or 10 years ago, he was losing 18,000. I took it a long time ago.
Yeah.
I'm concerned about how far out it goes.
So are you okay with this change though, this version?
Yeah, I'm seeing a little shorter way to progress through, but that's all right.
I think we can just do.
Let them precinct.
David, you said you're okay with it?
I just want to understand. That picks up just some south of state to Ohio. I know. South of state between Fifth Street and Long Ohio. I'm just trying to get that region. That's not armored. That's not.
No, this is north. This is north of I-70.
And so it's north of Armfield.
Yeah, it's, it's on the other side of the bridge. So, so like I had received in the last census, I had received 9.4, which is that little piece that's sticking up to the farthest left side, those new ones. That's the one that I received last time. And this, I'm just trying to, trying to keep number two more toward Piper because that is what it was supposed to represent. When they built this division, say Piper wasn't nearly a pocket. So they had to have some of that inner city to be able to keep the back. Now I'm seeing, we should just start pushing two out to where it's more representative on the, the western edge of the city.
Well, I'm, I'm supportive of what you and Mr. Brenneman and Mr. Mylan. Whenever two of the three of you are compared with, you'll have.
Okay, if you want to just do 3.1. Fall back to my 1.1.
So, okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
The extra work.
So you want to prove that tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, I've got to do a resolution.
So we'll do it. We'll do it at the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Yeah, it just has to be done before the end of the year, right?
Right, okay.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we can do it in the first meeting.
No, no, I was just going to talk to you about.
I know, okay, but we'll push it off the next board meeting.
The first meeting.
Oh, I didn't realize you had it on.
It's not.
We're going to do the update tonight.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. So next on the agenda is our 2023 budget plan. Tonight, we're talking about our capital improvement plans for electric and water. Heard of the parts of it. I think this is the last update until we get to the retreat. Okay, so Randy?
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's our final presentation in our series of budget review items for the 23 budget. Tonight's your opportunity to look at the, you know, kind of get yourself familiar with what's going to be proposed on the capital side. Each division's going to have a representative here to go over their priorities in the capital. This is your chance, want to ask questions or you can hold those questions until the retreat and, and follow up at that point in time. You can do more, more than welcome to do at that point in time also. So part of our prior criteria when we, when we talk about capital, you know, we want to make sure when we do a project that it, you know, improves our customer service. You know, makes our operations work. Improves reliability. One and the three are kind of related and it also reduces some of our operating costs. So hopefully when we do a project, we're not just doing projects just to do projects, we're doing them to, you know, address one of these four goals. So with that, we're going to start with water and I'm going to, Steve's here and Steve's going to go over the water priorities for 23.
This is Steve Green, Executive Director of Water Distribution. So our capital water projects for 2023, our water work equipment. We have one automobile that's going to be replaced. It's a truck at engineering. It's had several motors replaced. It's at end of its life. So we're going to replace it next year. And the other thing we're looking, we're going to have for water tools is being able to test commercial and industrial meters out in the field. Try not, so this will allow us probably to test around 200 to 250 a year and make sure they're accurate. And we're getting the revenue off of the meters. And then for the work equipment, we have three crew trucks that need to be replaced. They're roughly 17 to 18 years old. They're at the end of life and so we need to replace three of those. Next slide, please. So our transmission and storage side, of course, the 7 million gallon reservoir you guys are familiar with, it's coming along good. They are, that first slide there kind of showed where they're at right now with floor. The, the next step they'll be doing is pouring the floor and after that, they'll set, they'll, they'll break camp and come back in the spring. It should be completed sometime in November. Once everything supplies, whether everything holds out, we should be complete. Our water pump station, we're doing some upgrades at parallel station. We need to do some new switchgear and VFDs. The switch gears go back to the probably 70s and so they're outdated. And so we'll be doing that. And then we're going to have some transmission valve improvements and a little bit of main improvements. The mains are mostly due for the leaks we've been having on transmission mains. We still have a couple more to repair next year. And then our river crossing, that's the one we're working on right now. We're in engineering stage of that. We're at 30% on plan on that. So for the people who are tuning in and are familiar with the KDHE, that's the Kansas Department of Environmental. And then those are loans. Those are loans, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yes, that's a loan that we have. And that's what we just approved to extend it to get working out so we can finish these projects. Yes. Next slide. And this is distribution. These are kind of ongoing improvements that we have to do every year. And these are major projects we deal with. The, the one is the UG capital improvement projects, any kind of road construction they do, any sewer work. You may have to relocate, install new mains. This one in particular has the Hudson Road improvement right there at, at, in Ludworth Road. So that's going to have to, I think they're redoing that intersection. And then some leak projects, which we'll be using our, our loan for that, pay for those projects. And then the other big ones is that it's ongoing is our valve projects that we have to replace water valves in the system. A hydrant program that we replace every year and our service program that we replace. Those are, we, we, those are daily tasks we do. Next slide. So a few more projects that we do, technology, just trying to, we used when we made upgrades to computers or anything like that. or anything like that, um, with our GIS or anything like that, water meters, that's what roughly we go through a year. We're meters that burst that, uh, that are outdated and we need replaced. And then facility improvements, uh, with the facilities where we need to make some improvements. And, uh, and like I said, the rest of the grounds is, is that's all of our, includes our reservoirs and all that. The other product, projects that's down at the, uh, um, the switchgear and VFD upgrades for water, uh, near the water power that plants about 22 years old and we need to do some upgrades to the electrical. They, they're, um, they don't make parts for us, a lot of those anymore. So we are getting limited on what we have in stock, so we need to do some replacements. Next slide. This is our breakdown of where we're gonna have. So we've got 7 million in cash that we'll be spending and the rest of it will come from the KDHE loan. Any questions?
Yeah, Steve, um, or Randy, I don't know which one of you. Does one of you guys have a comparison to what we saw last year at this time? For, I'm gonna ask everybody tonight the same question. So do we, do we have like the list of capital projects from last year for the 2022 budget so we can do a side by side? And I understand that's gonna come in the budget book.
Yeah.
At, um, this is something I, I would.
So you're saying, are you asking on, are we spending what we spent last year?
I'm asking what was budgeted last year, what projects potentially were completed, what projects were anticipated in the 2020, this year's budget, 2022's budget? That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to do a real comparison.
I see what you're saying. Um, I, I, without having a book, I can't.
Oh, no, understood.
Yeah, but we, I could, we could give the complete projects that we have completed and what we expect to complete. I did give numbers. I think we're able to go on that at the end of this slide of what we're projecting to be spent at it by the end of this year. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other thing I'll add is sometimes these projects are multi-year projects. So it may be budgeted for last year, tend never to complete it last year, maybe a two or three year project. So we won't, we're spending over a period of time and.
Yeah, so that reservoir is a, a perfect example. That's like a three-year project with design, build into two years. That Kansas River Crossing, that's kind of, kind of the same way, a three-year project. So we'll get design done, go out for bid and probably somewhere late September, October range, contractor going. And it'll go into construction into next year. Yeah, we can definitely get a list.
Thank you.
Next slide, next group is gonna be electric distribution. Jeremy news here?
So distribution side, we have 13.43 million dollars, um, our major projects. Annual overhead construction is, um, just kind of a lot of our ongoing maintenance improvement projects kind of fall into that bucket. Hyper overhead feeders project, uh, which is, we're bringing some feeders out on 118th Street. And this project's actually gonna set us up to feed all the development going on in that area, um, that 118th state. But primarily the driver for next year is, um, Urban Outfitters and their new facility coming online. And the Rosedale Substation new feeders, um, that's something we've been working on for a few years now. And so we'll be able to finish that up in, uh, 2023 and get that all completed via last, last phase of construction. Annual underground construction is somewhat over the overhead budget. Uh, we're doing things like switch replacements, cable improvements. Lots of our projects fall into that. Distribution pole inspection replacement, um, that's been something we've been doing for, I think, about three years now. It's ongoing issue. We're going through sections of the county, um, inspecting all distribution poles in that area and then coming through and replacing them, trying to get ahead of a lot of our maintenance issues. So continuing that next year and we'll be, you know, doing that to the foreseeable future, trying to make it through the system and then eventually those costs will, will go down if we're able to complete the entire county once over. Um, annual transformers, that's the budget. We purchased all of our, uh, overhead underground transformers. That's actually simply higher than our previous budget because of material costs and things like that. You know, the, the cost there, every cost has increased, but that's something we would have been hit pretty hard with. The Yards Two project, um, something Mr. Haley was mentioning earlier, um, is happening. So that's, that's the first phase. Um, yes, sir.
Go ahead and finish up.
That, that's our first phase for getting, uh, power down to that project. There'll actually be additional phases in the coming years to, um, tie another feed, that's additional liability.
This is Jeff. So, uh, mine is the Rosedale Substation Feeders.
Yes, sir.
So we have 800,000 left in our bond from 2028. So 1.2 will be cash?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just, David, thank you for that. So the, uh, the, um, Yards Two project is anticipated, or this is online with similar projects of their size in terms of our, this is kind of my first rodeo, but something like this. I mean, this is all along with what traditionally we do. We provide for.
The electric.
For the new electric to that tube?
Yes, typically. Um, a lot depends on whether or not we're talking, uh, overhead or underground service. If it's underground service that's required by the customer, then that cost gets pushed back onto the customer. It's overhead. Typically it comes from our bucket because of the large cost difference there.
But an example would be the helm. So the economic development that was granted to them doesn't include the million dollars that we'll spend outside of their property to prepare it for their property. So there's always, economic development is happening without us granting economic development funds to a company because the BPU and the residents of our city, repairs of our city are on the hook for the advancement to bring utilities up to the property line. So that's something I always need to be kept in mind when, when people come and ask for economic development. Is what are the other costs that are gonna be associated with this project beyond, you know, for the BPU?
Yeah, in, in some areas, obviously we have facilities on site. Those costs are, are very mental at us. But here, this scenario where we don't really have any nearby feeds, we have to do private work to get service down to those.
Thank you for the clarity.
Sure. Next slide, please. Electric transmission, we have $750,000. Two projects there, the Victory West Flanero and Victory West maybe the transmission line was broken down. Our Victory West substation, uh, right now has underground transmission entrances. It's our only substation like that and that cables, uh, you know, from the seventies, so it's overdue for replacement. So we're gonna complete that and, uh, replace those two underground feeds for that substation. Transmission line inspection improvements, um, that's our ongoing, um, inspection and, you know, repair, replacement, and rework of our transmission system. And then the transmission line fiber optic installation. That is for us to install overhead, um, optical groundwater fiber, um, in our transmission line. That one in particular is one of our tie lines, Kansas Power and Light, Evergreen, excuse me. That we'll be doing next year. We've identified a few of those projects going forward. We're gonna install, um, fiber optic. And what that does is lets us improve our relaying and our system protection at those substations by talking to both ends. Talking to our relays and evergreen's replaced.
So one, a question about the Victory West. So since it's underground, it was built as underground, it'll have to remain underground?
Uh, we're actually planning to go back overhead with that. The cost will be.
Less.
Much.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Excellent. Yeah. Uh, electric substations have $215,000. Things like relay upgrades and replacements, we typically do. Those are ongoing projects. We do some every year. Substation improvements, um, that's a lot of things, things like replacing switches, adding additional equipment. Covers, covers a lot of just all the improvements for doing our substation modernization. Um, and then this Lance projects, um, have additional bit of money for some, just, uh, things like batteries and, and breakers, just some tail end stuff. It's gonna come from 2022, finish up. Next slide. Our electric general construction budget, uh, 1.945 million. So there are our work equipment, the $450,000 is things like, uh, bucket trucks, um, all of our crew vehicles, things like that. Automobiles is, is the smaller trucks, um, pickups and ten cars that our staff uses. Electric tools, um, it's our ongoing tool budget for, for new tools, replacement tools. We're looking at some, you know, always new tools and, and new ways to keep the guy safe and help them do their jobs a little more efficiently. Electric facility maintenance, that's just the maintenance of our service center building, um, you know, HVAC and ongoing, ongoing costs like that. Uh, electric meter replacement, that's replacements of our electric meters that are, you know, uh, kind of in their pipe that's starting to get, you know, inaccurate and, and need to be addressed. So that's an ongoing cost we do every year. And the electric technology, that's, that's our budget for things like, um, you know, computers, laptops, tablets that Bill guys uses. I'll use also, uh, security improvements at the service, at the service center. We've done some things with that budget. So. Here's our funding breakdown, 17.6 million in cash. We have some remaining money on the 2016 C bond that was supposed to be applied against our transformers, but because of leak times, we're not able to factualize those funds. A lot of those, those are pushed out till next year, which is not a reason that transfer budget is so much higher than typical. Remaining 2020A bond, um, for the Rosedale Feeders and then our EDA grant, that's gonna go towards the, uh, hyper overhead features project for Urban Outfitters to bring those feeders down 118. Uh, for a total of just over 21 million dollars. Any other questions or anything else?
So how much delay is it still in getting transformer?
Uh, we're looking at two years, which.
I know the prices have gone up, but.
Yeah, so our typical, typically we would see like a, an average full mouth transformer you'd see in your neighborhood in about eight to 10 weeks was what we were seeing. And now we're 102, 126 weeks out. So it's been a really big challenge for us to prime names that, you know, cost double, triples and they just continue to go up.
That's a problem across the industry. Everybody, everybody's dealing with that at the same time. So two years, you were talking two years.
Yes, sir.
Or over two years to get a transformer?
Yeah, from, from two months to two years, pretty much.
We just also in the process of the service entertainment building this budget, uh, we got notified of 16% increase. And tack on to the transformers. So they had to adjust that. That was after they'd already adjusted, just. It happens with Steve's pipe and happens with transformers, any, any. Add to this work metal materials involved in this.
So there's a lot of good articles I've seen, you know, where, you know, a lot of utilities are trying to address this again, it's affecting everyone. We have, uh, three different suppliers we use and they all have the same issue. Some of them won't even quote us certain types of transformers anymore. They're just saying we can't do it. Um, so that's something we really had to work through and try and, you know, just be a little more creative and a little more mindful. All right.
Thanks, Randy. Good afternoon. The so far, I mean, the first slide we've seen here, this is related to the NIMM one. We look at Brooklyn Bus, uh, goes to 7 million dollars for NIMM one. The biggest, uh, project we have so far for NIMM one is the, uh, coal, uh, nozzles and head replacement. Basically, this is from the burner on the outside of wall and into the, uh, inside of oil. And we have 36 of those and the last, uh, major in 2012, we worked on the outside portion that we moved to the inside portion of, uh, NIMM one. For the first project. The second project is the generator we, we went to the heat, uh, restoration basically next year we have a, uh, Newman, uh, spring outage. And the key drivers for that is, uh, is for the generator. And the generator we're expected to do maybe between five and six weeks outage and that for, which we have to do once every six years on, on the generator. And this is the, the, the kind of portion of it open. And then the open and shut and the auto routine work with the, you know, on the inside. The first project going down is the, uh, selected carbon electric, uh, later, later. And what we've done so far, we bought, uh, some tissue on the industry. Fourth one is, that's a plant, POC, DCS conversion, in the older days, everything is running days on the, uh, I mean, within the last 10, 15 years. So we have a lot of POC. And it always sits, we can burn quite a few of all the major system that they have a control to the DCS bases. And right now, these are the, uh, the process, we can burn some of the POC, or the DCS base, wherever one common control base, which is more DCS, more robust. And then it's, uh, better communication and it improves reliability.
You can say, double PC, DLC and DCS.
The, basically the one of a larger controller is of a smaller scale. The DCS is like a distributor, uh, control. And look at, you know, look at, uh, I mean, a lot of it talk about micro where the POC is a small one, DCS is a bigger one. And right now, instead of having a small controller send information to the, to the, the DCS. And the more interface we have, the more unreliable it is. So the intention is, is have it feed whatever information directly to the DCS. Distributed control. Now then there's something else. I don't think it's just a, I don't think. And the, uh, third project coming down is basically the, uh, Fennel Jet Filter, there, these are big filter bags that we have on the back end of, uh, the fuel gases, the stream. And it's been in service in 2000, the end of 2007, 60. And we certainly see them bags. Or nation already. So we start, uh, to implement with, uh, replacing these and that it would be like a two to three years project. But next year we're gonna force you to start on that part. Number five, heat what heater, the, the, uh, the heat what a fire heater right now is out of service. And, uh, we repaired a couple of times, but it kept leaking. So we, we closed it out. We bowled it out. And the key function for this is improving efficiency, uh, steam cycle. I'm guessing this probably improved maybe a quarter to a, uh, total, uh, send overall cycle fees.
So we're just bypassing that for now?
Right now, yes, we bypass it. The, uh, at 20 some years old, it was replaced once and, uh, and the, the tubes. Twice, but completely. The air control, the oil control, air slide blowers, the, uh, these are new system that we didn't put in, in, uh, late 2016. And now we start experiencing quite a bit of problems with it. So, and, and these are pretty heavy, basically, if they blow. Basically, ask to keep the, 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 the S line ball. So that, that, uh, it is a pretty corrosive and, and evocative environment. So we need to replace those. And the SCR doors, initially when we put these, uh, the S R in from day one, we just, we put them in and then, uh, we pull it inside of the intention, but this is, we would do these, we will door. So in the future, uh, we will replace the first layer. And in the future, 34 years, I will definitely replace the, the same layer, just the doors instead of, uh, pulling inside.
Don, this is Jeff. So on the air slide blowers, so is eight years about the life expectancy for those?
Well, right now.
Corrosion.
You're now talking about six or seven. And we start experiencing, uh, quite a few problems with that. And what we're looking at right now, changing out with a better design.
Okay.
Better quality, uh, better quality, uh, blowers.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. I don't know, Randy, how much time do I have? I mean, I'm sure there's some hours behind on that.
Yeah, we need to get moving. We have 10 minutes, so we still gotta get through.
Basically, I know those are key, large representative projects. And what we do at, uh, uh, electric production NIMM right now, when you look at there, whatever, improve our reliability, efficiency. None of these projects I have is, is, is nice. None of these are. And. I guess, I mean, uh, because in the interest of time, the board can see it and then, then maybe we may have more question or details in, uh, separate film on that part. But e- examples. But example, okay. From the bottom, startup transformer we built. And that was there, it's like 40 years old, we, we built ones. And that was it, we do that basically, we change our loop, the one or four pumps on that part, spin and paint that part. So these projects are pretty much reliability related or efficiency related. We've been beating on that multiple times now on that. And there's a couple more on this part, like conveyor belt, we need to replace it pretty much. The budget was $75,000 a year, pretty much every year, this one belt, we have 11 total. And fire protection right now, we pretty much done with it, $50,000 to finish out the whole of payment, that fire protection payment. And the other one is, is besides, you have one example, the same thing with CT4 control. Currently it's a Mark VI system that's been installed since 2006. And it will come to the point that we need to, to change out. And with the goal, with the GE system, in this case, we look at, go do the ovation, which will be the same common platform with, with Neiman currently we have. And the ovation system to these is more reliable that part. And as far as training and then and spare part as well, so to have one common system is better. And now on the particular CT4. And the last one, electric production work equipment, that basically do we build our those up and that will be a two years project. We will start sometime toward the end, next year, the following, after following year. I think the overall coming in like 1.2 million dollars. Those are, those are. All right. So for electric production, we look at the, we'll also knock a lot of dollars cash funding for next year. So electric supply is next, I think.
I can't, yeah.
Real quick, it's, they got to skate out days, upgrading for their, their systems out there, software, hardware. It's not worth 2 million dollars. Well, that's going to be coming from the cash side of the ledger. Thank you.
I have just two slides I can cover in a couple of minutes. Our total ask is for 4 million two, I think it is. Highlights of this are, we.
Jerry can't see behind the.
Thank you. The application services, all our software, it's capital improvements for the software we have. Business intelligence, that's our tableau and that's providing information in everyone's hands, all the different business units. Major initiative we have next year for a lot of drill downs, a lot of capabilities for that, that's 220,000. Customer applications, there's probably seven or eight items in there, so we're going to have a really effort, Jennifer, and my, our team together, improving the customer experience. We've got a couple of major projects there, we have the customer information system upgrade with the Kianta system. That'll provide a lot of enhancements that are on her backlog of things that get done. We're going to include that in the enhancements, there's a lot of effort on the staff to make some other capital improvements to achieve those enhancements. On utility ops, there's a number of items in that bucket. Utility ops, we're doing a major improvement on meter data management. It's a major upgrade, it's about 10 years in the wait to get it done. To have a lot of the functionality that we need in the business unit's hands to prove the way in which we look at load research, load analysis, meter data, and there's a lot of data that these smart meters provide. So that's the effort on, on utility ops. Enterprise improvements, there's a lot of smaller items in there. But we have a team there that does the integration. So the integration in the enterprise improvements for a lot of the applications that benefit all the different business units. Next slide. Infrastructure, that's the hardware in the data centers. It's a business continuity, disaster recovery, we plan on automating that. Right now, we have a major malfunction, a lot of manual interventions by the team to get service back online, to get them all synchronized. So that's the effort there and the security, we've got a number of software patches we need to keep up to date with. We need to purchase some software, we're going to include in identity and access management. So when a person changes jobs, all of their, their requirements and all the functions that need even is eliminated into the new person gets in the job and it's automatically transferred. So that's an effort for that. And quality assurance, project management, we have a tool we want to have for project and portfolio management. And the desktop support, these are basically. So we've got 35 items here, I've summarized it in, in the two minutes. Thank you.
I'll go over the, just kind of the remainder of the project. So administrative technology is related to our copier lease that we have as well as have about 170,000 for technology upgrades related to our document management system. Security improvements, about 25,000 in security improvements within this building. And then Dennis has about 150 for company wide. Couple of other things for the Minnesota Avenue is seeing, we've had some work done on the garage. That's kind of a multi-year project. So the 175,000 is for continued work on the garage. And then she budgeted some money within the facilities just for things. Repairs, HVAC. Any kind of cube construction or anything like that.
So yeah, this is summary of what was presented, this is the total total capital with the economic development April program to be added there at the bottom is 61. Next slide. And if you break that, I'll buy our sources of funding. Report 40.7 of it's from cash, 17.7 is from KDT, 7 is from EDA grant. And then we have about 1.5 from bond issues that were issued in 2012 and 2016 to make up that 61.8. And last slide.
This last slide is, we were asked in the last board meeting to kind of get where we're at from a capital budget perspective on. So when I presented their quarter financials, we'd spent about 24.6 million of our capital budget, which was about 56.2 overall. So that left about 31 million, 31.6 remaining. Each of the areas have kind of projected out what their spend is through the rest of the year. Electric production is about 2.6, ops is 1.6, IT is 1.6 and water is about 9.5. And I did break down the difference on the water between cash and KDHE. These numbers are estimates, some of them may be impacted by supply chain delays. You know, at the end of the year, but that's what they've identified of orders that they have going. So our projected end of the year capital spend is about 15.3 million. So we have about 16.3 remaining, which is about 29% of our capital budget remaining.
That's the last slide, this will all be part of the budget presentation to the board on the fifth of early December. So if you have, it's kind of warm up to that, if you have a question specifically, you can also address them at that point in time too.
You should be getting your next week.
This is Jeff, move to adjourn.
Rose, I second.
Roll call. Roll call, Brian.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Brenneman.
Hi.
Haley. Island. Mulvaney, Henry.
Hi.
That makes some carries, the work session is adjourned.